Yes, sure.
I never want to get you before you got too comfortable.
Father God, we come this morning to you. You've asked us to do that. Whatever we decide we want, or we need, or make a decision, that we first come to you and get your advice, or your word, and your will. So here we are, Lord. Whatever decisions that are made here for the county and for the citizens, we just ask, Lord, that you be with the minds that are making those decisions and make sure that those decisions are there, in place, to benefit not only the citizens, but more importantly, Lord, that they glorify you and that they work within your plan, that they do what you want them to do. And we ask, Lord, that that just be blessed. And we ask that you be with those who are in need and keep our workers protected. But more importantly, Lord, we ask that if there's anyone in our county, workers and employees that don't know you, that they see you and begin to know you because of those of us who do. We ask all of that in Jesus Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Correction. Remember, I mentioned that to you about the... And this involves you. In the newsgram we put, and you printed, that there was no change of the district boundaries. There was a little bit of a change.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Neskotunga went up to Marvin. And the only thing that really changes is where they vote at.
Okay.
Because there's really no county road right there in Neskotunga. But the people of Neskotunga went to Marvin's district. So that's going to change their polling to a jet. And it's just basically a correction in the grant.
Just a population correction. The actual boundaries don't change.
The boundaries did not change.
They did not change.
Okay.
It's just a population correction.
And I remember they were... We were too short.
One.
We were too short. And I said, "You're going to be some of my pregnant here for your order."
I'm moving.
Yeah.
Do me a second.
All in favor?
Aye. Payroll.
I think we have them all signed.
Just make a motion. Make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'm an open launch.
Man.
Yeah. It's nearest to you.
Man, she's throwing down. I guess she'll get tired here in the rain.
I don't know where it went. This will... I don't know if there's going to forget it back there.
We'll leave it here for you this afternoon.
There you go. I can shut the door. I'll take my carry makes out. Give you a break. Shh. Watch your feet.
I did.
And we're on top down.
You know, before I took this job, I was... I didn't carry... I'd leave mine in my pickup for hours, getting a tractor. I didn't care. I'd call anybody back and call them.
Yeah.
About change.
That's all.
Some people need the answer right now. Well, they act like it. They'll call you over and over and over and over to the answer.
He could be the... Give me a message. He could be... He could be... He wants to call you.
That's not damaged. That's inmate, dude.
Yeah. Yeah, that was pretty crazy.
Another charge, isn't it?
Yeah, there are charges. And I believe his bond was raised. It was like $45,000. I mean, they'll probably try to add it to his account, but it's not like he already has it.
Take a seat. Thing is, man.
Right. I hope he's still being called somewhere else. He was being called somewhere else. I didn't check this one.
Did you pass the drone line two at the program?
Well, one.
I think I missed them up.
Oh, okay.
I had to use August for September. Now we use September.
Okay.
I think now they're going to start just listing that all on one bill. And then we can just separate it out on our POs. I think that will be easier for them. I offered that at the beginning for them. And they said, "Oh, no, no. We could send separate ones." And I think they're actually... This last month, all came together. I said, "That's fine. We can make..." You know, they come by email, so we can make copies and just...
I know it's working.
Yeah.
I find it bugs all the time.
Not the discount, are you?
I'm telling you.
I'm trying to hit collection. If you want to get something at the end of it, just let me know. Done already?
I moved. Check them out.
I'll second that.
No, one favor?
Aye. Blanket purchase.
I have... I have blankets from the emergency manager, county general, District 3, District 2, and the assessor. Assessor. Bottom ones don't sign. These top two.
This one. That's it. They vote together? That's the...
Yeah, don't sign those.
Wait. This... We can't sign this.
Right.
We'll have to change that.
So... I didn't know. Can we cancel it?
Purchase on county general.
Yeah.
Signing date?
Yes, please.
Second.
Okay, got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Red and the crossing.
Must hold 14 times. Leave that on next week. It's just what you do.
I called her myself. Just do not forgive me. Even though we'll be fighting the devil on the road.
Haven't had one in so long. Don't even know. I haven't do anything.
Where do I sign?
Happy birthday, Janet.
Yeah, baby.
Jake only got one, and I forgot to do on the...
You want to make a motion on this?
I made the motion. Yeah. I moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Air Med Care Network. Air Med Care Network membership and AMC and Fly You Home membership.
They just have their own form to sign for us to sign with their payroll direct. And the one is the Fly You Home. And the other one is the regular Air Med. And we... And she was fine. We'll start on those with one on one. I think there's just one place for one. Just sign.
So that I was right with him.
Is this the one I want?
They have a lot of affiliates. So it's not just Woodward. If it's closer, like if you're down in Gold Tree, it can be King Fisher. I think they have one in Ponca. But it covers a lot of... And sometimes I'll even consider if they aren't able and it's...
Request to remove Troy Shepherd as a recognition officer.
They'll still...
And add Jennifer Hensley as a request to... As a request to have Cam Woolcott as a receiving officer for our county purpose.
Why are we removing one and adding two?
Well, one of them is...
No.
Jennifer was a receiving officer, right?
No. They only had one receiving officer, and that's been Tyler. So we're adding another receiving officer. Troy is not actually an employee. We've always left it on there for two, and that was at their request. And now, and they're making... They requested to go ahead and have Jennifer sign. So she's on the board also and take Troy off.
The one on Cam, uh?
Cam is receiving.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a pause there.
Okay, okay. I thought she was adding them both in the same position.
No, no, no.
I'm moving. Check that weekly.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. It's actually them doing it, man.
Yeah, this is their request. This is what they sent to us. They requested it.
I was just curious.
Request to use courthouse lawn.
Beth Smith contacted me in November 11th, which is Veterans Day. She and Carrie Roberts and some of them want to come to the courthouse lawn at 4:30. And they're going to sing songs and play music and be done by 6:00 or 6:30.
Who'd you say contacted them, sorry?
Uh, Beth Smith.
Beth Smith.
I see no problem. I'm moving. Let them do it.
I'll second.
A worship service.
Worship service during Veterans Day, yeah. And it's open to the public.
Of course.
Hire a full-time, part-time for not one in this.
I was wanting to replace the employee that was off on Epon Way. She's not able to come back yet. Her Epon Way was up August 22nd. I've had to deny request officer time three times last month. And we're going to be getting a bind. We don't want those people to lose time when they haven't been able to use it. I would like to replace the full-time, but we could probably do it with another part-timer. I have three part-timers. One of them hasn't been working. One of them's in college. She did say she would take some shifts up next month, though. And then one that works four to eight days a month.
Just to clarify this, Veronica. Are you dispatching any person?
Yes. Yes.
Like how many hours?
I'm on five days this week. I think I have four next week and two the week... One after. So, yeah. I'm not in a full-time four on two off, but pretty close. I mean, I worked this weekend. I work a lot of weekends. And I don't work a lot of evening shifts. I have the schedule downstairs if you want to see.
I was just... I was just curious.
I think we could do it with a part-timer and you keep doing the shifts. It just... Sometimes it gets hard to do both jobs.
Well, I guess my question is your budget. I mean...
Well, it was planned with that extra... With that other person. This isn't a new position. I was just wanting to replace the one we had.
So you're actually going to take her completely off?
Yeah. Well, we're paying her health insurance. That was done. Yeah, she's done. Her Epon Way was up in August. But I just need a... I don't like having to deny time when people ask off. I hate for them to lose it when it's usual lose. And how much comp time do we want to give out and that kind of thing? Because we don't normally do comp time a lot. Occasionally. I had to give out six hours last month. And that was the first time in probably three years we've done comp time. But when you get into comp, then you have more problems with people wanting to take off.
Do you have any part-time applicants?
No. I'd have to put an ad out.
Well, I mean, you think there would be part-time applicants?
Maybe. I don't know. The last time we put out for applications, we didn't get a lot.
Go down, you mean.
Yeah.
Part-time.
Part-time.
Either one.
Long time.
Yeah, either one. They're not knocking our doors down to work overnights and holidays and weekends for less money than, you know, like the position you just opened or the maintenance man. And we could do it with part-time. It's up to you guys what you want to do. Save the county a little money.
That's one thing.
You can make it work, part-time.
I probably can. I can always come to you and... I mean, we're not eliminating that position permanently, right? Like if we needed that full-timer, decided it doesn't work, I need them. We could go everywhere.
You could always come back and request the full-time. If you get some applicants that want to apply for this whole time instead of part-time.
Right. Well, I mean, people want insurance.
Sure.
And the benefits that we offer, because that's one of the good things about working here. It's the benefits. Our insurance covers the holiday time, vacation time. You don't get that everywhere.
Well, how many employees are carrying around now?
Right now, with me is nine.
Nine employees only? Would you run around a lot?
Well, ten with me, yeah. We run 24/7. And we have two people on each time. We could cut back on overnights, but Rink still doesn't cover all of those jail shifts. So we're still jailer at least two nights a week. And if we... We could get by with one at night if it was a jailer.
Because one's what you're meant to worry about, right?
Do what?
One's what you're meant to...
Yes. I have to have one. The way everything's set up down there, it'd be hard to just do one without a... We can't really do it without a jailer. You can't spare the one. Yeah. But I... We could cut back and... That would be another long shot. Probably just want to hire a part-timer for now.
I know that this...
I just... I don't know what kind of application you would need for a part-time.
Right.
And if you have full-time benefits, you might be...
Yeah. I mean, that isn't a managed...
That's kind of what I look at. Probably going to have to get a full-time.
But we can try.
It's whatever you guys want. I'll take your direction.
Like Mike said, we can try the part-time, and then if we have to, we can come back and...
Right. I mean, it's not that the full-time on there, it's not a new position that's...
No.
That's lost.
Yep. Just roughly, in a six-month period, how many nighttime calls do you actually get?
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
Not a lot.
So cutting back to one person at night might would be the most feasible thing.
Right. But the jail isn't covered every night, overnight. And there's just...
But do you know the nights that they're not?
Sometimes, but their overnight jailer has every other weekend off. So that would put a... I mean, my people only have one weekend off every six weeks, so...
Would that be a temporary relief until you talk to them? It would also give your people more time off.
Right. Well, I mean, they all work at standard. It's what they work every month. At least I would have to deny people time when they try to take off.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, when it's... It's up in December or January, and they still have their full two weeks. They haven't taken enough, so...
That would just go after a part-time first.
And see how it works.
If it don't work out, then...
I would suggest trying the one person at night some.
Okay.
So I think it's... You'd have to talk to yourself, but...
Well, we used to work by ourselves a lot of time. We took care of the jail. I mean...
Sure, sure. Sure, sure.
Before, when Charlie was still chair of Westside Trustees, there was just one of us. We were up all of it on weekends and nights. So I worked like that for years. I'm glad this courthouse is a little creepy at night sometimes.
This is creepy during the day.
So we're going to go out for part-time.
Okay. That works.
Do we need a motion? I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I will look at the schedule and see if I can cut back at night.
No, we're more, we're more.
Because the people I have overnight, they're okay with that as long as they have a jailer. It's hard to be in the jail at night when one phone goes off and, you know. We don't get a lot of calls at night, but sometimes they're serious and we do.
Sure, I, I would expect it to be serious at night or that they call.
Well, you never know.
Any and for certain business.
I'm moving, we care.